Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. This is our first meeting of the new year. If you could all rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll take the roll call. Holly Ben?
Here.
David Blooming?
Here.
Erin Levitt Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack?
Present.
Alan Needham?
Here.
William Rice?
Present.
Elizabeth Burt? Richard Cortez?
Here.
Gary Lundgren? Absolutely. Okay, Rich, we have a full complement of regular commissioners today, so we don't need your services being promoted today, so please feel free to listen to all deliberations. I just remind you that you're not able to participate in deliberations.
I can participate in public, the public session, yes?
Public care. Moving on to item number three, approval of minutes. So, Mr. Needham, we have two sets of minutes that need to be reviewed. If you could lead us through those, please.
Okay, I guess we'll start with the oldest first, November 13th. I wasn't able to print these out. I have trouble. I pulled these quickly.
Okay, so, yeah, the November 13th that we looked at at our last meeting in 2019 was tabled due to some comments that the commission had. We asked staff to go back and review.
I did not have the time to review these meetings. Just for short here.
Okay.
So, I'd asked that the commission table action on this, that item, do you know, on 13th? And I apologize for that.
They have a motion to table the review of the November 13th, 2018 minutes until next meeting?
I move second.
Okay, Holly moved. David seconded. All in favor of tabling until our next meeting, the November 13th, 2018 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's try the meeting on Tuesday, December the 11th. We already passed them. That's the, I know, my 11th, it's confusing. Back to the December 11th meeting. Any issues with page one?
Nope. Um, hold on. Okay. There is reference to the November 13th, 2018 meeting minutes, but it just says what we did, so no comments.
Okay. Page two. Anybody have any issues with page two? Page three. Yeah, I was going to see the reference to size and scale, because that's exactly what we talked about. Page four.
No comments?
No comments, okay. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, December 11th.
Still moved.
Second. Discussion, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Poll.
Who seconded that one?
I did.
Okay, David? Holly abstained. Okay, next on the agenda, old business. We are receipt of a re-subdivision application number 1802. I'm just going to read it and then I'll open up the public hearing. Application 1802 of Robert Green Associates, agent, Robert Cave, owner, for a two-lot re-subdivision on the property located at 14 Roswell Road, assessors map A16, block 307, lot 015, zone R40. And commissioners, just as a reminder, after we, we have to close the public hearing by February 12th. Okay? So, I'll open the public hearing and let me just explain how we're going to run it. I'll ask the applicant or the applicant's agent, whoever, to come up and explain the re-subdivision, paying particular attention to the requirements of the sub-division regulations, make it clear if the applicant is seeking any variances or variations to the regulations. After that presentation is completed, I'll offer members of the public a period of time to make any comments. Okay? Please, any members of the public, if you do choose to speak, come up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please, okay? And address the comments to the commission. I may refer the comment to the applicant, but please refer the questions to the commission. Okay, so I'll ask that the applicant, Mr. Cave, I think you are prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing me to come up and explain what we would like to do. I think, by the way, I'm Bob Cave and I'm the owner of 13 Roswell Road here in Simsbury. There is a staff summary, it's called Exhibit 15, Exhibit 15, which you may find helpful as I go through my comments to explain what we're doing. And first off, we're not asking for any variance or changes. We're going according to all the rules and so there won't be any requests that we're going to have, so I'll tell you that right up front. You'll see a picture on page two of the lot. It's on the corner of Roswell and West Mountain, a little over two acres. It was developed in 1956 as part of the Stanwood Development. We are requesting that that one lot on the corner be subdivided into two lots, and that's the request that we are making here today. When we went about to gather the information, we had to have it surveyed, and we found that there was some issues that had to be addressed by the survey. And I think it's part of the reason why this hasn't been subdivided before, because I understand there have been some other requests in the past for that. We have completed the survey. We've made the corrections on the maps according to what they found, so what you're getting now is a correct map and a completely corrected survey also. We also asked the Farmington Valley Health District to look at it and make sure that it could hold a new septic tank, and they have mentioned to us that it's okay. And we have a reserve for the existing home that's left for a septic tank also, in case there's a need for additional septic tank later on at that home. Just to let you know, the existing home will stay as it is, and then the new lot will be right behind it. The new lot, by the way, will have a driveway off of West Mountain Road. It will not be off of Roswell. The question of open space. Back in '56, there may have been some discussion about open space. The rules have changed and whatnot. But we are offering a fee of $2,500. I understand that this packet, there is something for us to sign, and we're fully in agreement to that and willing to move forward with that contribution to the town for the open space. The conservation commission, we met with them and we had a soil survey study completed. And after reviewing all the information that we've had on the conservation commission, they've agreed and approved our request in this particular area. One of the things that I did is I went around, I visited with all the neighbors, and several of them are here tonight, and I welcomed them. I got great neighbors, by the way, very lucky. We had an opportunity to talk about what was going to happen on that property. It hadn't been lived in for many years, and so many of them were very happy to see the fact that it's being renovated and it's up for sale now, as some of you may know, destroying down West Mountain Road. So, that particular aspect is, the issue and concern that some of them had is what's going to happen with the water once a new home or something is built there. So, we do have, and we had individual discussions with each of them, and the part of the good news is that actually, once the house is built, it actually may have less water because of the way it's designed and the way we're being asked to put in the drain, the drywells and whatnot, off to the back. So, I think I've answered the concerns of the neighbors. Taking that into account, I have an expert with me, who's my site manager, who understands more fully about water and the land movement and designing, and that's JP Val. So, if there's already any questions that you folks have or the neighbors have, either I or JP can answer them. So, that's just a brief review of what we'd like to do, and we ask that you approve it.
Commissioners, we'll have first crack. Mr. Cave, any questions?
So, you're only looking to build one home?
To answer your question, yes, there is existing home there now.
And then it would be a listed?
Off of Roswell, and then this one will come off, and then it will be one home, yes. The Farmington Valley Health, they said that the septic would take four bedrooms, so it could be a four-bedroom home or something like that.
Mike, I didn't see in the information I saw before coming tonight, or do I see right now, a kind of topo? I'm wondering about the grades on this lot, and there's a mention about water, so I'm just curious to know what the grades and how the water would flow. If it does flow today, let's put it that way.
If you go to sheet three of five, it'll show your grading plan, the site development. JP could speak to that. This was a subject that the conservation commission reviewed this, the erosion set and control plan of the development of the potential lot, and there was quite a discussion of conservation on the concerns of, you have some pretty steep slopes that are in front of the proposed house.
Off of West Mountain?
Off of West Mountain Road, on the northwestern side of the proposed lot. These, the plan was to regrade a lot of these steep slopes in order to provide adequate sightline distance for the proposed driveway. So, a lot of it is matching existing grades, but kind of cutting them back, and majority of the water will kind of funnel down towards the driveway from the southeastern corner of the slope grade, and the others kind of fall in existing grades right now, just at a less steep slope is what the existing grades are. JP, if you want to clarify that.
Before he speaks, one thing I didn't mention, and I should have, Michael, and that is the line of sight. We had a lot of conversations with the engineer and Michael about, that section of West Mountain Road has a curve to it, and it can use some opening up, and we've been asked to improve the line aside from where the new driveway comes, which will help also with what Michael just said of the grading and limiting some of the water. So, maybe you could address Michael's comment about the water. This is JP Val, by the way.
I recognize some of the neighbors here. Mr. Carbone, we met with the other morning, and AJ has come over and we've talked about some of the work that we've been doing going along. As I, Mr. Carbone is on the downhill side of the lot, and in actuality, looking at the engineer's print, there's about a little more than a half an acre right now that is graded towards his property. The development of the lot is going to cut that half acre in half, and there's going to be about 0.3 acres that will start to grade. So, just the normal grading of a lot, what we're going to be doing is cutting that slope and that water flow in half. The soils on this lot, unbelievably for a lot developed this late, are incredible. They're very permeable soils. He says he's not really getting a problem right now with the water that's coming down, and he's fearful that some of the development of the lot might create more water, when in actuality, it's going to create less, where the surface area, like I say, we're cutting in half. All the stormwater from the house, roof leaders and everything are going into drywells, and everything is going to be sloping, you know, to the rear, the north, that'd be the northwest corner, into AJ's backyard. But I think he's high enough and far enough, far enough away where it won't be a concern in this. You know, we've gone over extensive erosion controls with Michael, and he's been very helpful, and I'm looking forward to working with him on the project. By the way, I am the guy doing the project. I'm not the guy up here speaking for a company that's doing a project. I've got my work boots on, and like I say, I've met with these people, you know, throughout the last couple of months for some of the work that we've been doing there. I'm looking forward, there's one other neighbor that was across the street that I've done work for for years, and I want to mention that I am from Simsbury. I live on Firetown Road. I've been here for, oh, 20-something years. My wife has been here for 40-something years. She grew up here, went through the school systems, and we didn't have a choice. We had our kids to put them through the Simsbury School system. I'm not going anywhere. You know, as AJ and Mr. Carbone will tell you, you know, I'm a personal book guy. We address issues. There are no problems. They're, you know, Farmington Valley Health, I've been working for for 40 years. They know me. We follow through and take care of any problems that there are.
Questions? Is the new house going to have a well?
Yes.
What's the condition of the existing home on the property now?
Excellent. We had an open house this past Sunday. It's, I guess the house had been vacant for seven years. It was bank-owned. It was, it was, it's a well-built house. As a matter of fact, I tried to get my wife to buy it. I really, really did, and I.
It's too big.
We're at the point in our lives where we're thinking about downsizing, but it was a wonderful, wonderful home, and, you know, with built-ins and hardwood floors and gas fireplaces and regular fireplace. I mean, it's a gorgeous, gorgeous home. The development of the property that was totally overgrown, I just imagine this place was like almost an estate at one time. You know, way back in the woods where our, the new septic system is going, there's a basketball hoop. And I'm going, what the heck is a basketball hoop doing here? I dig down, and it's paved, and there's, I find a stone road, a peystone road that goes around into this, a basketball court in the back. So, I can't imagine what this house was in its day. So, hopefully, we have brought the, well, AJ, you must know what it was. It had to be.
It was a half-court, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It had to be a gorgeous place at one time, the, you know, some of the landscape, you know, there are specimen trees that were planted around this place where it was, you know, incredible, you know, corkscrew weeping beeches and, you know, walnut trees, and, you know, all overgrown, and like I say, a lot of them, I'm arborist, so it kind of kills me to, you know, cut some of these specimen trees, but they were all overgrown and not taken care of, and we saved what we could and took out where we had to also. But, actually, in its day, I'm sure this home was quite the place, and, you know, the town had been doing a lot of paving on West Mountain while we were working there, and I know a lot of the town workers worked with them in construction companies years past. I retired from the Avon Public Works, so they were very curious as to what was going on, and we're explaining, you know, everything that's happening, and, but anyway, it was an exciting project, and we're looking forward to continuing that.
So, from what you said, I gather, no plans to have any appreciable improvements on the existing home?
What is there right now, we're done.
Okay.
Yeah, we completely went through it, you know, paint, carpets, you know, flooring.
How about the, not the landscaping per se, but any changes to the property to improve the sightlines that affect the existing house lot?
Any, the sightlines that Bob Green Engineering has designed is going to help Mr. Carbone's sightline, it's going to help the exist, it's going to help the, you know, where Roswell pulls out onto West Mountain, and it's going to help just people coming around the corner. Mr. Carbone told me that a girl had flipped over there years ago, 17-year-old girl, and he pulled her out of the car, and she was all upset and everything, but that, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's just a bad corner right there. It is. So, everybody is going to benefit from, you know, removing the small vegetation that's there and re-sloping that grade. It's going to open it up and make it better for everybody.
Where approximately will the driveway be for the new lot?
As you come around that corner, there's a concrete structure there that collects water and shoots it across the street, and there's a, what looks like they carved in a driveway years ago. We kind of cleared it out a little bit just to get a picture of it, and I believe that the new driveway is going to move about 20 feet. What direction are we? That would be 20, 20 feet east. That would be east.
Is it near the construction entrance?
The construction entrance will be the new driveway.
That shows you.
Yeah, okay. Yep, yep.
So, I overheard someone said earlier that the way that the grading is being changed, much of the water that will be flowing through there will be directed by the driveway. So, I'm wondering if on West Mountain there, there's sufficient, you know, catch basins or whatever to receive that new water?
Yeah, like I say, right at the edge of our property, there's a concrete structure right there. It's not a catch basin, it's like an open structure, and that will catch all the water and shoot it across the street, and I'm not sure where it goes from there, but someplace nice, I'm sure.
Across being through a culvert underneath, is that where you?
It's already there.
So, that's, it's going through it underneath the culvert?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Any other questions, commissioners? David, go ahead.
Question for Mr. Cave. You mentioned that it was, when it was surveyed, there were some changes that had to be made. Can you elaborate a little bit? Was this just simply stakes, or was this?
No. What happened is when they came to the town to make sure all the pins matched, they didn't. And they found that there was a two-foot error somewhere in the mix. They had to go back and find an official mark, which was in the neighborhood, and then redo everything that was there. So, that's, that's all been done, and it's all been corrected on the maps. Exactly where the two feet was, I don't know. When I heard the two feet, I just opened.
I just didn't know whether it was two feet or two hundred.
Yeah, it does make it, it has to be the same, and it is now, it's correct.
Our thought is, that's why the lot didn't get developed back when that Stanwood development happened, because they found that error and, you know, whatever, 50, 60 years ago, it wasn't worth the additional surveying for a lot to, just an extra lot, they figured throw it, the lot on with the house and go with it, and now with today's standards and the way lots are priced and everything, it was worth it to do the additional survey and correct the maps and find the errors and, you know, present the lot again for the re-subdivision.
Now, Mr. Cave, you mentioned that you have been in contact with the Farmington Valley Health District.
Yes, we have.
Have they issued any official statement to you?
They gave us a letter, which I'd read.
Oh, is it in the packet?
Yeah, I got a memo from Farmington Valley Health District, exhibit number 10 dated December 17, 2018, says, "Based on the soil data and reference plans above, prepared by Joseph Green, PE, and period, the newly created lot 15-1 is capable of supporting the installation of a code-combin' onsite septic system area sized for a four-bedroom house. This is also acceptable location. Proposed well is shown on the plan. The existing house on lot 15, number 14, Roswell Road, has an existing onsite septic system and well. Engineer has shown suitable deserved septic system niche in the area that is provided for future use." And that is from Diane Hardy, the chief sanitaryian.
I don't have.
Okay, that's missing from the packet.
Okay.
It's, it should be, exhibit number 12, or 12.
Oh, 12, please look to it, yeah.
One thing I might add to the, to, one thing I might add about the septic system, because the soils are so good in this lot, a lot of systems these days are raised, and if we raised a system, that would be more concern for the neighbors because the water would shed, you know, the MLSS of the system would shed away from it. But because the soils are so good in this, in this lot, it's coarse, bony gravel, the system will be, you know, subgrade and will not change the runoff whatsoever that is occurring right now.
Mike, regarding the Philo, there's no town open space or anything abut in this, this would enhance, or?
No, yeah, and that was actually discussed by the Conservation Commission, and they actually agreed with, in this case, a P and L of open space for the fact that there was nothing of environmental significance that would have warranted conservation estimates, and it does not abut any sort of open space parcel where, yeah, there would be connectivity with this open space and existing one, so.
So, it would be more for the open space.
Which, yeah, you know how those are.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions before I open it up to members of the public? Okay, so, if anyone, any member of the public would like to make a statement, a comment or questions, please come to the podium.
Yeah.
Remember to state your name and address, please.
AJ, building 12 Roswell. We're, our property is adjacent to the 14 for a long time, and I want to thank Bob for doing a great job on the house. It's been a high surf for the last six or seven years, but my concern is, is the water. And our septic system runs fairly close to the property line where the new existing house is going to be, and that land there is, I've got a newer septic system, it's about five years old, and it's a very fragile area as far as the water. The water table on all of north, the north side of Roswell Road is pretty high. I run two sun pumps that have been going pretty much nonstop since August, since we've had so much rain, but that's my concern, and I just wanted to go on record about that. If, I mean, these plans sound great about redirecting the water to some extent, going down to Sal's place, but it was kind of disturbing to hear that the dry basin would be on the northwest corner, which abuts my property where my septic field is. And it's just, it's a fragile space, and I'm really concerned about that, and if it ends up affecting me, I don't know what my recourse is, other than putting in an above-ground, and I just put one in, so I don't want to go out and have to spend $40,000 for an above-ground septic, and that's my concern.
I have a question. Are his soils different than your soil?
It's very possible.
It is?
Yeah. For, I mean, the lot that, the house that we did with the soil testing that we dug there, it, you know, the lot that we're developing, it's incredibly different. It's, yeah, it's night and day. AJ, let me ask you something. You've known me for a couple of months, you've come over, we've talked and everything. Do you think? Do you think that I would let anything happen to encroach on your septic system?
Well, I'm not gonna answer.
But it's just like, you know, like I said before, I've been in this town, you know, for twenty years, worked in the valley for forty years. We're not gonna do anything to harm, you know, he's got his new septic system, he's spent a lot of money on it. You know, I'm thinking that, that the way our, the grading plans are for this house is gonna enhance his system. It's not going to, you know, to hurt it whatsoever.
So Conservation considered this or no?
This would be a public health code issue.
So it's Farmington District?
Farmington Health District. On placement of dry wells, proximity to septic systems and other wells. So then when they, when they issued their approval, they, those, these are the factors that would be considered, like, for example, you wouldn't be able to put your septic system and overlap your neighbor's well, vice versa, the development of your property, you couldn't do it in a way that would jeopardize someone else's system, so.
Mike, what recourse do owners have in case of unforeseen issues?
Be a civil matter between the two parts.
Precisely the thing I want to avoid.
Will conversation between yourself and Farmington Health District help you?
Will it help me?
Yeah, well, meaning that they're the people that looked at this and said, "It's okay, if you have questions," would that be the best place to take them?
And how it would affect your septic system?
Yes. They're the experts and they're pretty fussy.
Oh, I know. Well, anyways, I just wanted to go on record about that, because I don't know what the recourse would be if it's a year down the road after the house is built and I've gotta put in a new septic system.
That'd be ugly.
Yeah. And Bob's retired to Florida, I can't find, you know, they're long gone, so, you know, that's, that's my major concern.
But the issue's been looked at by the Health District.
But did they look at how it was gonna impact mine ourselves?
They, when they approved the septic layout, they looked at the other locations and whether there'll be any conflict in locations as development of the property and placement of the utilities.
Well, in terms of septic, yes.
Yeah.
But are they looking at drainage?
They look at placement of dry wells, dry wells as a relation to the septic system, the lot that's under development, along with the adjacent area based on the records that they have. If they don't have records of your septic system, however, that's the only caveat, then they don't know where it is. That would be the only situation where they may not know that your septic system is right along the property line. It's technically on the public, the state public health code, it's supposed to be at least a minimum of ten feet from the property line.
Do they take into account the footprint of the house and where the water's gonna be shed from the house? Or they're just doing it strictly on?
They're looking at the subsurface, subsurface, well, how, what subsurface influence will have on your system. So your, your grading, et cetera, above, they're gonna look at, yeah, you know, they don't want to direct all the drainage right towards someone's septic system and then have it where you have their septic system washed out or undermines the capability, the fact that you've changed the drainage patterns of the area. In this case, they would have looked at the fact that he has some drainage, although it's not adjacent to the property line. If the commission, if you go to sheet three to five, his, where his dry well's located, it's approximately from the rear property line, I'm gonna guess it now, about a hundred twenty feet. And then the overflow structure is a minimum of fifty-one, fifty-two feet from the rear property line. So these, those drainage structures, which may have influence on someone else's property, those are set far enough back in a sandy soil situation where you, you really, it's contained within the lot. Shouldn't, this shouldn't have based on layout. And this was also reviewed and forwarded to the engineering department along with Farmington Valley Health District, and they thought it was a reasonable and responsible drainage development for replacement of one house, development of a lot.
So we see the dry well, and you said there was an overflow?
It's proposed three-by-eight stone splash pad, and it is, if you are...
Will the neighbors be able to see that, that the neighbors saw me?
I won't, it's right here in the, the southeastern corner of the proposed lot. And then dry well would be kind of just off the southwestern corner of the circle from the proposed house. So dry well is here, just off the southwestern, southeastern corner, and the splash pad is about fifty feet to the southeastern corner, right here, this square.
So I appreciate you showing that, but I can't.
You can come up and look at the plan.
You can feel free to come up and look.
Yep.
Cool. Can you tell us again what we're looking at?
So that's the dry well, the roof drains are coming in, most of the rainfall. This is the stoner of the wall right here. So your property line's here, this dotted line here is fifty feet from the property line. So that, that's a minimum of fifty, fifty-one.
And my septic runs like this.
Are you able to help me understand my orientation to this? I'm twenty-six, arrowhead, and I'm told that I'm within a hundred feet of this property.
Are you, are you on this?
I'm arrowhead, so I should help.
Just be the, be the...
Okay, you're, you're property, you're...
Yep, I am, but I'm told I'm about within a hundred feet.
You're within a hundred feet, but you do not abut your property, because that's a West Mountain, that's right. Carbone, who's Carbone?
Me.
That's you.
Okay. So, that's, this is my lot over here. And can I understand where the, which door will go?
Cut it back.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I didn't see it, was that so?
Yeah, you're kind of like all...
So apparently we're within a hundred feet, but we don't abut.
Yeah, that's right.
Got it, thank you.
Anything else?
If you're finished, unfinished, we do it. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak, please?
My name's Mark, district, I live at two-seven-five West Mountain Road. My driveway is directly across West Mountain Road from the proposed new driveway. And I'm disappointed that I wasn't able to meet with you gentlemen whenever we were in the neighborhood and stuff. I would have really appreciated the chance to be more informed about this than I am today, but I learned about it when I got my notice in the mail of this meeting. My concerns are, like so many others, I guess, about the flow of water. Principally because my house on the other side of West Mountain Road is also below the grade of the road. So I'm sensitive both to surface water and the surface water, which runs down from the driveway to the road and into that concrete structure goes under the road and through my yard in a, in a pipe that's, I'm fairly confident we used to be rebuilt, judged by doing our work, it's changed the shape over the years. But nevertheless, it flows out towards the back of my property and in between my property and the next property that's currently owned by George Cle, who is not here. But, so I'm very interested to know, pardon me, how that water volume might change, you know, and then I'm also very concerned about the hydrology, you know, the subsurface water. My well is pretty close to my driveway and the front, and, and West Mountain Road, and also below grade. So, and I don't currently know the depth of my well, but I'm one of the fairly newer homeowners there. I've only lived there twenty years. So I, Sal, who's, I think, was a little...
Twenty-six.
Before Simsberry was incorporated. But I'm, then I'm, because I've, I've had three children who have grown up here, I'm aware of the hazard of the road. And as my kids were learning to drive, I explained to them, "You don't take a left turn out of here, you're not good enough drivers, you're taking a left, because that corner is so hazardous." And in the twenty years I've lived there, I know of three automobiles that have drove off the road and wound up being stuck on a stone wall in front of my property. And then two others that have hit the telephone pole in front of my property that gives power to my house, and I learned about that because it's paramount. So those are the five accidents that I know on, on that curve. I'm sure that reducing the grade of the property could improve the sightline, but I'm not sure it's gonna change the behavior of the drivers on the road. One of the reasons why this is such a hazardous stretch of road is that it's an attractive road to enjoy the experience of accelerating through a pretty interesting little S curve there. And it's very hazardous to try to walk on because there's really no shoulder at all. So, and people will walk and bicycle by, even more, even more hazardous to bicycle. But that driveway, the first thing that occurred to me was that it's even more precarious of a position, not knowing how the sightline might be developed, than, than my own, because it being on the other side of, of West Mountain Road. And if you go out there and, you know, if you were sort of, I think you, you probably understand it much better than I can explain it. So that would be my concern. I'm also aware that, you know, in another ten years, I got very much, I'll be living there. I don't know what Sal's plans are, but, you know, no one stays anywhere forever. And so not too long ago, someone bought a place, just a couple houses down the road from us towards, towards forty-four. And they, shortly after they moved in, I noticed that a sign popped up that said, "Caution, children to play." My kids were playing there for twenty years, somehow I never knew how to get a sign put up. But I thought, well, that makes sense, at least to try to get people's attention. But I don't believe it's really changed the behavior. And I don't know what you can do, I know you're not the traffic commissioner here in Land Use, but it should be noted that this particular stretch of road is hazardous and not just for the line of sight, but for its character itself. And I don't think it's gonna change as, both because of the volume of traffic it's carrying for people going to work, but also it's just an attractive little stretch of road for people to exercise their vehicles on. And, you know, as a person who's a homeowner, I'm really concerned about my well, but again, I guess, I, I understand everything is compliant, and there's really is just wait and see if, if I lose, you know, the water supply that I've had, then I have a civil action that I have to try to, to take. But it doesn't look very promising, just as a layperson's point of view, that to see the house up on the hill that's, you know, probably twenty or thirty feet above me and what's gonna be happening, all that water, you know, both the water that I, you know, get out of my well, but also the water that will become. Is there anything you want to ask?
Thank you. So I will direct the questions to our staff. The proposed driveway, is it immediately, well, maybe I'll ask the applicant, the proposed driveway, is it right across from this gentleman's driveway?
Well, you, you know, it's where the drive, like, it looks like the driveway is.
Yep.
Right now. And I believe it's gonna move from there, third, the uphill of that. Is that a bit closer to your driveway or? No, that, that puts it just, you know, my driveway is probably almost directly across from that current cut, that old driveway.
Okay, so, so we would be, we would be like thirty feet east of that?
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the hazard of me using my driveway and any problem their driveway makes. I'm, I'm just thinking you're adding to this already, you know, fairly hazardous spot that, as, as someone who worked for soldiers for several years, I know they were instructed, you don't stop buses going in that direction on West Mountain Road, because people come around that corner, they just, they don't, they don't have a chance to stop. You know, my, my kids, you know, got on the bus on their side, and when the bus is stopped on the other side, those guys got, they got in trouble for stopping the bus over there.
I feel confident that that situation will be alleviated with, you know, the sightline and the grading that are going to them. I'm glad to hear that you do have a pipe running through your backyard and not a swell, because while the hydraulics probably will increase somewhat into that pipe, and I'm sure the engineering, as Mike has ensured us, has calculated the hydraulics of that in making sure that that pipe will accommodate it.
I would, can I add something?
Sure.
I would add that you can make the argument that improving that sightline would encourage people to go faster because they can see around the corner.
That, and also the town, and also the town paving that road makes the cars go faster.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe a bit time to, to get some bikes.
And the, the other thing is, Mark's comments about Sal being here before the town was incorporated, I've been here thirty-seven years and it was incorporated then, so. And the other thing I want to add is, the property I'm discussing, that I'm concerned about, on the fact where my septic is, is existing below grade of that lot as it is, as it stands right now. So that's what, that's where my concern is, any additional water coming down there is, could be, could be a serious problem.
So do I understand the, the engineering drawing correctly, that the driveway will be cut into the hill?
Yes.
Okay. And, but it'll still have a pitch down towards West Mountain Road?
Yes.
And any runoff that's collected on the driveway, it's gonna go into the town road and then into this concrete structure?
Yes.
Are there any, any catch basins or any other provisions along the driveway to manage the, the flow of water on the driveway?
Um, I mean, there'll be like anti-tracking pads and, you know, and geotech, you know, fabric and things to prevent erosion and slow down, you know, the flow of water. You know, Mike had mentioned, I think it was Mike had mentioned, that we put our, a tracking pad at the top of the slope versus, you know, right, right off the entrance of the road to help, you know, help with erosion.
And that's during construction?
Yes.
I mean, after the driveway's paved, you know, is it gonna contribute to a significant amount of additional water flow to the town road and through the concrete structure and through Mr. Testament's?
I want to say that the way the lot is graded right now, that the, the flow of water is not gonna change at all. I mean, in fact, well, I mean, of course it'll be an imperviousable surface, or possibly not, maybe it will be a gravel driveway, which would be about the same. But, because like I said, that, that driveway is kind of cut in there right now and it does drain that way.
Well, the, we're talking about the driveway in the?
The existing one, no, yeah.
It's, all the unit driveways will be charitable, but nevertheless, it is a, it is a...
It's an opening, a cut.
It comes down very close to that concrete structure that collects water and shoots it into the pipe that goes under the road and under my property. So that water is, as long as it's kept clear, it's managed pretty well. And the road is, is, West Mountain Road is fairly well-crowned, so that currently, you know, water doesn't typically come over West Mountain from the banks of, of this property and flow onto my property. That's not something I recall observing. However, I did not contemplate what would happen to a driveway that would be coming straight onto West Mountain Road. And, and if there was a sufficient volume of water, I would imagine it would just come across West Mountain Road, and then it would be coming directly down my driveway and freeze. That's, it wouldn't have any other place to go. And my, you know, it would be... And, you know, it would be in the vicinity of my well. I don't know if it would be contaminating or not, but it would be in the vicinity of my well.
I'm sure all our grading is going to enhance the drainage to that structure. I mean, it would be great. You can't have it go across the road. You have icing issues in the weather.
Right, you would probably notice very quickly.
So whether or not we have to, you know, build a little shoulder there to direct everything into that structure, that's what we'll be doing.
Do you know what the grade of that proposed driveway is? The, the?
Percent?
Percent grade.
Mike, I'm not sure if that was on the plan or not.
12%.
12%.
And it shows actually, the way it has it graded is that the, as it meets West Mountain Road, he's not grading it so it gives a straight shot out to West Mountain Road. They actually have it kind of making a turn to the north and following the side towards that culvert structure. So they are attempting to minimize what's leaving the site. And really, what, the area that would be contributing to anything that's, that would leave sight that's not already would be the paved surface of the driveway because all the roof leaders are tied into the dry well. So it's going underground. So you're talking about just an area of pavement in front of the house, which the way it's kind of graded, if you go on the sheet three of five, it appears to be graded so they kind of have a feathered end towards it going to the north, northeast. And that would go into that closed drainage, existing closed drainage system that the town has installed there along West Mountain Road. That may alleviate some of the concerns of water going, having a straight shot in larger storms and having, in this time of year, an icing condition.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to make a comment? Please come up to the podium.
Hi, folks. My name is Mary Brennan Centrella. I'm from 26 Arrowhead Drive. So I am behind the property. But I have received a notice from Mr. Cave, so I am apparently within 100 feet of this proposed. So I'm collecting a lot of my data as I'm listening to you tonight. I did call the town hall. Today was the second day I called town hall. I was looking for more information because this notice does give a phone number to call for more information. I called last week. The planner was supposed to call me back. I didn't receive a phone call. So today was my day off. I called just because it was timely. I didn't call until about 2 o'clock in the afternoon and I was made aware that I had until 4:00 to come down and review the file. The only thing in my phone call, I was just collecting data. You know, I didn't know what else to, how else to interpret this. The letter I got in the mail, it was dated not so very long ago. It's dated December 28th. To me, the owner of the property at 26 Arrowhead Drive. So a lot of the information I have, I just assimilated. I did not meet you when you were walking through Abiding Properties. I'm not sure if you came to Arrowhead Drive, but I'm apparently within 100 feet. So I am sorry as well that I didn't meet you when you came through. I can see some markings on West Mountain Road where you're gonna, where you are proposing to subdivide your lot. So I do understand that. My concern as I listen to this information is, I didn't just move into the neighborhood either. I came in 1994. Two of my children, my only two children, went through the school system and have completed it. So I did put kids on school buses every single day of their lives in this neighborhood. And I recognize a person whose kids also went on the same school bus, although we're not on speed dial with each other. I happen to know who you are, Mark, because our kids were in the same grade and that's about all. I actually came to this meeting with my immediate neighbor, who also has been in the neighborhood about the same length of time. And we also are within 100 feet of the back property mine, although we do not abut. So as I listen to the data that you present to us, I'm a little bit concerned about the soil that's so wonderful on your property because it's not on mine. I'm on the back side and I run a very active sump pump. And I run that because I was flooded out some 20 years ago in my basement. That pump's running regularly. It was running recently when I was out in the backyard. So we do have wet property. Anytime I've spoken to septic people who have pumped my system, you know, they, they mentioned to me that our soil quality in our neighborhood is not great. So I only go by what they tell me and the fact that I needed to put my sump pump in because I flooded. And it does run actively. So that's the status of my neighborhood, my home site, which is about 1.1 acre on 26 Arrowhead. So that's why I was interested in seeing the site maps because I haven't had a lot of eyeball time with those. And I was hearing some data and I'm not sure I have it processed quickly. I'm not sure what you consider will run out the back of the property to make any more water in that area. I don't know if you can comment on that, but I'm really commenting on what I know my soil to be for having lived there for a very long time. So that's one comment. Another comment is I'm not sure, and it's perhaps none of my business and you can tell me so. I don't know if you plan to come and join us in the neighborhood or if this is you bought a property and you're chopping off a lot and then you're going to move on because that impacts what happens to the rest of us who plan to stay. Just a comment. If you choose to answer, I would love to hear. But if you don't, it's probably law within your right. I wrote some notes as I was listening to you. As I listened to West Mountain Road folks talk about, about the road, I think the speed limit is 30 miles an hour because I have been pulled over once in my life for not abiding by that. So it's very slow and that's because, I think because it's, it's a dangerous road. Children live on that road. There's no sidewalks on that road. And for some reason, the town decides that we should be moving slowly on that road. So just to comment on, you know, it's not a major thoroughfare. It's an area where people are asked to take their speed limit way down. And the only thing about water flow over that road, and it's really not right where you're discussing, it is a little bit, I'm not even sure north, south, east, west, but in the direction of McDonald's, water does come over that road and it does ice up because I drive that road in very early hours of the morning when I travel to the hospital to work and late at night when the temperatures are low. And freezing does happen on that road. So I'm not sure what the flow will be over that road, but there are places on West Mountain Road that appear to flood out when the rest of the road is not iced. But there's icing in front of people's property. So it can potentially, you know, set up.
McDonald's?
Well, traveling in the direction of that south, thank you.
So where are you from? Where are you, because I travel West Mountain every day. I'm not sure where you're talking about it icing over and water flowing over that road. I just want to be sure that.
So I live, so if you take my crossroad where Arrowhead, that comes out onto West Mountain, about halfway between Arrowhead and where it comes out in the back of McDonald's, on the right side of the road where turkeys have gathered many times over the years causing a ruckus, there's icing that, that happens on the right side of that road. It's from waterfall from the property. I can't tell you who the people are, but it's about halfway or a little more than halfway between Arrowhead and where West Mountain jumps into Bushy Hill. That's the area I'm speaking of.
I want to know more about them, Michael, because I don't, I mean.
Nonbrook appears to kind of cross West Mountain right about that point. Look at the?
No, I'm, Nonbrook, I think is in the direction of Tooton Hill School. I'm talking in the opposite direction.
It circles around and crosses down below there where you're talking about. Just out of where, where Nonbrook goes over.
And the icing comes right out onto the road. Am I the only one that sees that or do you?
Well, it's a, it's a sort of, Nonbrook doesn't have a very good channel.
It is Nonbrook.
Structure. It kind of revolves. It's a little.
Is that called Nonbrook?
You do get some flow, yeah.
Okay, but I don't know what it's called.
It goes, it goes under West Mountain over there.
Okay.
Down by where it hits Bushy Hill.
Just past, what's the middle development that's off there?
Morne?
No, before that.
Old Stone.
Well, past Old Stone.
Between Old Stone and Morne.
The brand new four-house development in there.
Old Stones on the other. And it would be about halfway in between there. But on the side of the road that Old Stones.
Erica. Erica, yeah. That area, it can.
And it's due to Nonbrook?
Yeah.
That's quite a bit, Sal. That's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It is.
And I didn't understand the open space that you spoke of. Did you speak of open space and I didn't understand it because I?
Maybe, maybe I can't explain that to you, Mary.
Thank you.
Whether subdivision or this is a re-subdivision, our subdivision regulations give the commission the authority to require the applicant to set aside a certain portion of open space. It's not mandatory. It's, it's an option that we have. Now, over the past few years, we've understood that this can sometimes be not so logical in smaller or even, even large subdivisions. So rather than insist on having open space be dedicated to the town or through easements or whatever methods we have, we have in our regulations the option to require a fee from the applicant. At the time, I think at the time that the lot is sold. It's the timing. And that money is set aside for other potential investment in open space throughout the town. So in a situation like this, how big's the lot? Four acres?
Two acres. Two acres. A little over two acres in a way.
Okay, so for us to consider insisting upon open space, it would be in a very odd location and the intent of the open space is for public use. And it just doesn't make much sense in this, in this situation.
It didn't to me either.
So if you, you know, if you look at some other subdivisions, maybe of a 40, a 40-acre lot into 20, two-acre lots, we would probably insist that a certain portion be dedicated as open space.
Okay, so this, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. There is going to be open space on this lot or is not?
No, no.
Got it. Then I misunderstood.
They have proposed to pay the town $2,500 in lieu of dedicating open, open space.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that because I didn't understand the open space. Those were my only comments.
Hi, my name is Sal Carboni. I have not been here ever, but 26 years I've been there. I live in 272 West Mountain Road. I've been PJ, they have been really gracious about giving me a brush to what plans are and nobody there planning to do it just on the later, you know, because I don't sell that kind of stuff. I expressed my concern about running the water. My property, I don't get flooded in the, I don't have a basement. I have, my, my house is a, it's a ranch and the bottom floor, I mean, that's all finished. And I do not, I never remember in 26 years to have any floods in my house. Take one and knock it away. But the land, my yard gets saturated when there's a lot of rain that gets saturated and a few water right after that little rain that you just, just really leave your tracks alone. So if we had more water, PJ, he assured me that my, my drainage over there would be improved. That's what he said. I want to believe that, but when the house is going to be built, I don't know if they're going to be there. So I would have to deal with somebody else. So I just want to go on record that my concern about to take care of these waters, the running waters properly. And also I would like to make a comment about traffic in the road. Maybe I have nothing to do with this, but I think it does because it's increasing, it's increasing in traffic and it is very, very dangerous. Very few people respect the speed limit in their road. Many years ago, the town put in a sign that says, "Blind driveway." It was my driveway. It's always done, it's even before Roswell, but at least it was there. But nobody, nobody pays attention. I, I do recall many accidents in that place. I put stones in the front of my property along the West Mountain Road because I used to get cars in my, in my yard all the time. So I put stones over there. It'd be kind of discouraging to them over there. They're going to leave the front to handle over there. That's what they're going to do. So that's all I have. I just want to go over and do that.
Maybe we should put a speed camera. Tell me it's in revenue.
What's that exceed our?
I don't, I don't know if it's your, I don't think it's your, your field, but, you know, perhaps maybe the town would think about putting some spit bumps in there on the road because nobody respects the, the speed on the, on the road. And the police, they have no place to, to hide, let's, you know. And I even invited them to say, "Hey, you are welcome to be in my, to park in my driveway and patrol the road." But, you know, that's, that's where we live. We have to be careful. We have been lucky so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other members of the public wish to speak? Have another comment?
I apologize for not meeting the two of you. I did go around neighborhoods, appearing to meet with a lot of the folks and listen. And we heard a lot about water. And JP and I have spent a lot of time on the water and you heard his comments concerning it. And I've had several conversations with the surveyor when we were designing it. And whatever is finally decided, I think, from what we've heard from the people who know is that, yes, there could be some changes, but from what I've heard, it's not going to be drastic. And we're going to do everything to make sure that that doesn't occur. So one other thing, Mary, I've done 25 flip homes. I buy them, I clean them, fix them up and then sell them. So I'm not going to be in the neighborhood. The house is for sale. So if you know anybody what you want to have as a neighbor, have them come over. But anyway, I enjoyed this neighborhood and I enjoyed it. By the way, I've had 10 homes in Simsbury. So I have been an owner and a seller. So I've been paying a lot of taxes for the years too. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cave, in the event that the commission would want to look a little closer, would you be willing to allow us access to your property?
Oh, definitely, anytime.
So before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, I have, I have a desire to actually walk the property. Other commissioners can, you know, either say yes or no.
I'm interested.
Dave, what do you think? Erin?
I'll join you.
Yeah, I've gone by dozens of times since this was on the docket. So I feel like I go by this every day. So I, I have a good idea of what we're talking about personally.
So would you oppose the other commission?
No, not at all.
It would be a real meeting.
Yeah, we would have to notice it.
Oh, it'd be a real meeting.
Right.
Will they have to keep the public hearing open?
Yeah.
Staff would recommend that you keep the public hearing open if you want to have a safe word. Just in case you see something, you want more information, interference the applicant.
Correct.
You get him the ability to provide additional information. Otherwise, you close the public hearing, you are only acting on. Otherwise, you close the public hearing, you are only acting on what's in the box.
Right.
Do you have a place to park?
I think it would be off Roswell someplace, or-
Parks are always-
Sorry, the traffic.
Before they schedule it, just to make sure, you granted the commission permission to go on the site. If we were to have a sidewalk, the public is welcome to join us on the sidewalk. Will you also grant permission to the public to join?
Absolutely no problem.
Okay. Otherwise, staff would advise you not to schedule a public hearing if the public was not, I mean, a sidewalk, the public was not welcome.
Understood. Okay, so commissioners, keeping in mind that we have to close the public hearing by February 22nd or 2nd?
13th, 12?
12.
12.
Sorry, 12. So, I propose, you know, trying to do this next week.
The sooner the better, because when inclement weather hits.
And there's not much daylight.
I was going to say to do it during the light.
Yeah, so, would a weekend day be okay? Okay?
We've done that before.
Yeah, yeah.
How about January 12th? Oop, that's this Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay? 19th?
Where is I know? Where am I going?
And it gives time for the notice?
I just need, for a special meeting, I just need a 24-hour notice.
Okay. Okay, what time would be good for commissioners? You want morning or afternoon?
10:00.
10:00 a.m.?
Yeah.
10:00?
Yeah.
You don't want, you don't want to be there in the, yeah. Even morning, instead of afternoon. I guess it doesn't matter.
I would say that the house that we renovated would accommodate several cars in the driveway, so you guys could park there at 14 Roswell.
Okay.
You don't have any showings or open house scheduled for that morning, just so that, you know, the commission doesn't-
Sunday.
Sundays, okay.
So, Saturday at 10 would be fine.
Okay, so, yeah, let's, Saturday at 10, we'll have a special meeting.
19th.
Oh, yeah, yeah. January 19th, 10:00 a.m., 14, how does it, 14 Roswell? Yes. Okay, try to park in the driveway.
The agenda will say we'll meet at the driveway 14 Roswell.
Yes.
There's plenty of parking on Roswell.
And, yeah.
So, we plan on meeting at the driveway of 14 Roswell.
Yes.
There's a snowstorm. Do we have to have an alternative date?
Don't worry about that. It's not for the snow.
It's Jim.
No snow.
We don't always get much worrying for these things.
So, your only catch is your next meeting is January 22nd.
Yeah.
So, unless, I mean, then you're getting into extensions.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful that-
We'll bring her snowshoes if we need to. I have to be careful. And we'll see how steep it is. I'll bring my downhill shoes, too.
Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, so, we're going to leave the public hearing open, okay? What that means is we'll take this up again at our next regularly scheduled meeting. I guess we have the opportunity to have the public hearing during the sidewalk. I don't anticipate that, but we'll pick it up again on the 22nd of January.
19th.
All right, thank you very much.
You said the 19th. Mr. Chairman, you just did a motion to continue the public hearing. You lead a motion also to schedule the sidewalk for the vote.
Some, it's too much. Let's do two. Okay, so, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until January 22nd.
I second.
Nope, you second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. If someone wants to make a motion for the special meeting?
I make a motion for the special meeting, and I'll on January 19th at 10:00 a.m., open to the public for a sidewalk.
At 14 Roswell.
At 14 Roswell.
Drive? Roswell Road?
Road.
Road, in the driveway at 14 Roswell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I am out of town right now, so I will be sure I go by yet again for the empty time to take a look after the discussion today.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is that it administratively with this item, Mike? Okay. Good. Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion that we tabled the next item of old business, which was to take up application.
No action required. We still have the public hearing open.
Okay, so I don't even have to have the record?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Let's see, we have no referrals under old business. Under new business, any receipt of new applications, Mr. Glidden?
Not yet. She's got something coming.
Interesting.
That looks kind of ominous.
Yeah, it's ominous.
I know.
Okay, so, under general commission business, you all should have received this informational flyer put out by Connecticut, let's see, who puts it out? Connecticut Bar Association. They are sponsoring and executing a training, education and training session geared to planning and zoning that is going to occur Saturday, March 23rd, at Wesleyan University from 8:30 to 4:30. And for those of you who have not attended one of these, I think it happens every two years.
Every two years.
It's actually really good. I've gone twice.
Three times.
Three times. And it's very, a lot of information, some top-notch people doing the-
Good speakers.
Yeah, they make it interesting, even though the subject matter could be less than exciting.
Which we signed up for.
They tend to spice it up. So, I recommend, you know, that you consider it. It's not mandatory. Mike, in the past, there had been an option to have the town pay for the fee?
We had money to pay for your registration. The only thing it asks is that if you want to, if you plan on attending, please notify my office by next Friday, because we're trying to sign everyone up at once. This thing fills up within two weeks of announcement. So, they've already put the PR out, this all mailed to every land use commission in Connecticut, and there's a limited space, so.
So, can we tell you tonight?
Sure.
I would like to sign up to go.
Rich, you can speak.
I raise my hand.
Great eye contact, it was good.
All right, so, Rich and Aaron so far, anyone else?
I'm interested, but I can't commit at this point. I need to know what's on my wife's calendar.
Yeah, I'd go again. You guys are all going, I'm like, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
I hope to go, but I got to check my calendar. Traditionally, the town planner buys us dinner.
That's not my wife, we're good.
I have to check, I'll attend. Any other correspondence that has come in? Any other business we need to discuss?
Oh, we've got this CROG.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, let's see where that is. Capital Region, here's your council government. Capital Region Council of Governments has an organization called Regional Planning Commission. It's made up of, I think there's 32 towns in the region now. It's an opportunity for land use people to get together and discuss items related to the Capital Region. The meetings are generally at the West Hartford Town Hall, and there are five scheduled for this year, as you can see, January 17th, March 21st, May 16th, September 19th, and November 21st. I have been attending these for the past couple of years, and I think, Alan, you've gone to the 21, okay? I would ask if someone has an interest in this, and this is a meeting that I think I'd like to have someone else be involved in, primarily because I've picked up a couple more meetings in the town, so my time is being stretched a little bit more.
Can I see the dates again?
Yeah, there you go. I'll tell you, it's, you know, it's not a lot of time commitment. There's no homework per se. You get the opportunity to see all the zoning applications that other towns are putting, I don't know if it's all, it's at least the ones that could impact adjacent towns. So, there's a lot of interesting stuff going on throughout the Capital Region.
I answered those before myself as well, and I recommend it to anybody who's interested.
So, when do we need to respond to CROG?
Well, the first one is 17, next week.
Yeah, I can go with that one. They're looking, are they looking for, yeah, membership list. Appointments are made on an annual basis. Do let us know by-
Yeah, let's see, they'll let us know.
No date. It's okay, you can actually change your membership at any point. So, I'll go next week, okay? It's already on my calendar. Then we can talk about the next one. Okay? Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to sign your next agenda, CROG appointment for the Regional Planning Commission, so that we can remember?
Good catch there. Okay. Any else, commissioners? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I still move.
Holly moved, and David seconded. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Meeting's adjourned at 8:22 p.m.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.